For the Chancellor to walk in.
Chancellor says not to wait for you. You can go ahead and begin the meeting.
Sounds good. Good evening, Peralta community. Apologies for being a bit tardy. Let's call the meeting to order at six. That's not quite right. So six eighteen, I believe it is. And let's go on to three point two, Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Handy, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Is she unmute? Trustee Handy? Okay. Trustee Delphine Polk. Would you like to lead us?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Polk. Let's move on to roll call. Sasha, roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Hogan, are you here? Student trustee Latino?
Here.
Trustee Whitrow?
Here.
Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee Handy?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
I'm here.
Trustee Bonilla, absent. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Three point four, affirmation of the statement of cooperation. As per usual, I will read the abbreviated version out loud. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that clarifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, we have committed to three things. Build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Three point five, report of action taken in closed session, Madam Delphine Polk. Any close?
There's no report out.
All right, thank you. Three point six, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Polk. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan? Absent. Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Three point seven, approval of the minutes. Motion, please.
Sure move.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Roll call.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla? I'm sorry, trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Three point eight, associated student government reports. Do we have any student leaders in the virtual space?
Is there anyone here to speak on the behalf? And raise your hand if you could just help me out here. There's a lot of people on my screen. I do not see anybody in the associate student government reports.
All right, let's move on then to three point nine, Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Okay. Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, Terrence.
Okay, thank you, President Reese. Good evening, President Reese, Vice President Delphine Polk, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have two classified Senate campus reports. The first report comes from the Merritt College Classified Senate. The Merritt College Classified Senate held its election on Monday, June thirteenth. The years covered for the new senators were covered for the years 2022 to 2024. The current positions they hold are the Chetan Henry, reelected president, Metisol Roque Chavez, hopefully I didn't butcher that, reelected vice president, Nancy Marino, new secretary, Margie Rubio, Senator, Michelle Mai, Senator. Our continuing senators serving until May thirty first, two thousand twenty-three are below Maria Spencer, Shanid Anderson, Jamila Saleh, Susanna De La Torre. The second report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Laney Classified Senate Retreat took place on Thursday, June sixteenth, where goals were assessed for the upcoming year. Topics included introducing caring campus to the Laney community. To qualify for the next cohort, our college must submit an assessment to ensure Laney is ready to benefit from the initiative. The Laney Senate has reached out to key areas of the campus for assistance in completing the assessment. We will keep everyone updated on the progress. Second, steps to make amendments to the Laney Constitution and bylaws. Third, professional development, spending monies and processes. Fourth, institutionalizing two retreats, Senate retreats during the academic year, fall and spring. The next Senate Retreat is tentatively set for December two thousand twenty-two. A special thanks out to the Laney administration for providing breakfast and lunch. Shanice Milligan and Joy Perrin for helping with setup and service. And a very special thank you to the SEIU steward Alejandro Acosta for providing clarity on the duties of the Senate and union roles. In addition to a wealth of knowledge on successfully representing classified professions. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence, for that. Let's move on to three point ten, District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, President Villarreal, members of the board, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. The academic senate, as in most faculty, are not around, or some are teaching summer classes. But wanted to thank the board for having a retreat and trying to see how everything is going amongst themselves and to work on their issues. And I think the efforts of doing presentations by the chancellor and the college presidents and updating you all on the educational master plan as moving forward, the role of the district in regard to that. And certainly, looking at the district and looking at the functions as we move forward. I think that CM is there now at the, at beginning to go to the colleges to really look at what are the costs, what are the expenses at the colleges? And I really look forward to that. As we move forward, we are really going to have to have the colleges have much more independence. And I think the structure really calls into question how we, the relationship between the services that the district provides to the colleges and what the colleges themselves do. So I really appreciate the work and effort in those areas. I wasn't able to hear if at all there was any discussion about the ACCJC response that's due in November. I hope that the finance department and other areas that were needed to demonstrate, to show that day to day, week to week, month to month, that they are doing the things necessary to make the changes that we need to demonstrate are doing so. And that we are going to be able to report to the ACCJC that we are doing all of the good work. I don't know if the consultant is being used and are meeting and so on. But I am assuming that if they haven't started, that the, that they will be starting from the college AOLs and the district and all of the different folks that need to work on those things and not wait too long. Finally, I am looking forward to having a governance meeting of all of the district governance committees somewhere in early September at the latest. So we could really get these governance groups working well. And I know that the chancellor is committed to doing so, so look forward to working with her. Finally, I'd like to encourage folks to come to our plenary. We're having a fall plenary. We try to do this every two to three years where we talk about where we talk about the pertinent issues of today and have discussions with different constituency groups that we engage with, from the chancellor to our state president, senate president, to our constituency leadership, whether they be the union or they be classified professionals or student leaders. We want to invite folks so we can have some good dialogue on how we can all work together. And we are excited that we are doing it in a hybrid mode. We will be over at the Laney Best Center, and we will physically be there and then online. So we're going to try to see how we do this hybrid mode. It will be interesting to see how it works out. But we really want to inform our faculty about any of the recent things that have been going on from the state in particular that we, as faculty, need to address and begin to address in numerous areas in terms of minimum qualms and other kinds of curriculum issues. And so we're looking forward to having that plenary, like I said, on Wednesday, August 17th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald. Let's move on to public communication, 3.11. Sasha?
Anybody who has any public comments, please raise your hand. Right now, I have Tammy Perry. I will move them over. Oh. Nope, they put their hand down. I will move over Karen Shields. Karen, once you've been moved over, you can go ahead and speak, and you have three minutes. Can I see two additional hands up for that, president?
Thank you.
Karen Shields? You're muted.
I'm ceding my time to Roberto Gonzalez.
Okay, I'll be moving Roberto Gonzalez over. Roberto Gonzalez, you've got six minutes. And you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, there we go. So let's see, let me do, okay. So I think we have others who are looking to cede time as well. And so I'm wondering if we could sort of sort that out a little bit, and then we'd have a better idea of who's going to speak. Because there are some people who are wanting to cede, and there are definitely people who are wanting to speak.
I only have one other hand up. It's Huey Nguyen? Oh. Okay, the hands keep moving, so let's give it a minute. I have four. One, two, three, four, I have five hands up. Those who want to cede their time, put your hands up. Those who do not want to cede their time, put your hands down for now, please. Okay, so you can only see two people on, so.
Excuse me, what, President, point of clarification? Could we find out how much any particular person can cede to another? Just to reiterate.
Two people.
So two people maximum can concede? And how many minutes maximum? Was there?
Well, that would be, that would put them at nine minutes.
Okay, okay. So back to our first speaker. So a total, a maximum of two people concede their time.
So Karen Shields already ceded her time, and then he can only take, he can only, one other person can cede their time to him.
Okay.
So I've got, we'll just do, I'm gonna, we're gonna cede Huey Nguyen? So you'll get nine minutes total.
Okay, I was under the impression that Huey was going to cede her time to Richard Tholey, if Huey and Richard, yeah, if Richard is on board.
Okay, this is, this is, okay, so I have Richard.
Yeah, and I can do it, I can do mine in six, that's fine.
Well, I got Needong, too. So is Needong gonna cede their time to you?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so you got Needong, okay, you got nine minutes total, starting.
Oh, perfect. I don't need all that, but that's great. Okay, so I'll just start in. So hello, good evening, all Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson. As most of you know, my name is Roberto Gonzalez. I work in disability services at Berkeley City College. I'm the Peralta Classified Senate Parliamentarian. I also serve as an SEIU officer and site steward. I've had the pleasure of representing SEIU during negotiations and will continue in the upcoming cycle. As I referred to in the last board meeting on July 14th, at least three conversations I was involved in with administrators, the topic of trust was raised, where we all acknowledge that we need to build trust within Peralta, that we lack trust among administrators and classified professionals, and that trust must be earned. So I started on this topic a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't get to finish it. So I'd like to just see if I could kind of close that out. So two weeks ago during that meeting, I described how management's implementation to the return to on-campus work in January was inferior to what staff proposed. Managers insisted that all staff return to campus three days per week, all on the same days. Our SEIU members immediately pointed out to managers that this was a poorly thought-out plan based on the status of the pandemic and the absurdity to have all staff on campus in a small space at the same time, mostly serving students over Zoom. Managers resisted staff's recommendations to stagger two groups of staff for on-campus work to two days per week for each group, for the purpose of safety and for the reality where students are showing up. This schedule, which was proposed by staff and ultimately negotiated with the assistance of union representation over a period of weeks, provided additional opportunity for in-person service to students. That is, four days in comparison to management's plan for three days. I want to turn our attentions to the 4-10 summer work schedule that we're currently in right now. Article 9.14 of the SEIU contract in part states, "Any future proposals for 4-10 summer work schedules are subject to negotiations annually between the district and SEIU Local 1021." I bring this up as another timely example of management's lack of vision, lack of flexibility, or any meaningful leadership when it comes to increasing enrollment and putting students first. The 4-10 summer work schedule, where the colleges are closed on Fridays during the summer, is, first of all, an option that the district has the choice to implement or not. It's fair to say that we've moved away from the initial argument that the 4-10 schedule is for cost savings. To be clear, I and others have been told by previous administrators that the 4-10 schedule is, in fact, a gift to management. In light of our concerns for increasing student enrollment, there are several instances where staff was denied to work the normal Monday-through-Friday schedule for the summer. For some, 10-hour workdays are just not compatible with family obligations. But in any case, students are denied the option to conduct Peralta business on Fridays, like getting assistance with classes, financial aid, et cetera, during the months of June and July. Closing down the colleges on Fridays is certainly not doing students any favor. Let me, let me return to trust. Trust, in part, results from mutual collaboration. Managers have been largely unwilling to collaborate, and in some cases, like the financial aid stories that we've heard, have been forced to, back to the table to negotiate, or more accurately, that is, to be reminded of what we already negotiated in our contracts. Trust is built upon promises kept. I am regrettably ending my comments to the board tonight by saying that the district has fallen short on gaining trust with SEIU because management has been unwilling to stick to their end of the bargain. A deal is a deal. A deal is not an art. It's about keeping promises. I urge the Board of Trustees to insist that managers negotiate in good faith, to keep their promises, so that management can build trust with SEIU and the other bargaining units. Students need to trust that we will be there for them. But deception, bargaining and bad faith, turning one's back on negotiated agreements won't get us there. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. I've got Richard Tholey. Are you done, Roberto? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I could be done.
You still have two minutes. You can continue if you'd like.
Well, what the heck. So a little bit about what I do. My title is Alternate Media Technology Specialist. And in short, what I do is I provide alternative formats for students that have some sort of print-related disability, for their course materials in a format that's more suitable to their disabilities, such as audio or digital files. And what I've pointed out to my manager as an example is that even prior to, actually years prior to the pandemic, because of shifts in technology, that in-person service, when it comes to delivering the alt-media service, has actually been transitioning to remote service anyway. I had been using Zoom occasionally, so I was one of the few who was already aware of Zoom prior to the pandemic. But even more so, you know, just use of email and cloud-based storage, accessible apps on handheld, was increasingly becoming more and more common with students that was really allowing us to be able to deliver that service much more easily. So I'm back to basically full-time, 100% on campus. And, you know, I have, since the summer, I haven't had to, you know, I have had no contact with students in person. I had two students, one of which wasn't even my student, it was a student at another campus that I had during the spring. And I've yet to be given a good reason as to why I can't continue with a staggered hybrid schedule. So I understand that we are, it seems that we are headed towards negotiating a telework commute policy. But for some reason, you know, managers have just not been empowered to be able to negotiate ahead of time, even in spite of the fact that we know where we're headed, instances where remote work makes sense. So I'll leave it at that, and we can definitely return to that. I look forward to negotiating with the district on this and other subjects in the very near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Tholey, you've been moved over. And you have Huey Nguyen that has ceded their time to you, so you have six minutes. And Alejandro Gonzalez.
Thank you, so nine minutes. Okay, good evening. My name is Richard Tholey, chapter president for SEIU 1021 and president-elect. So I'll be with the district, representing SEIU for the next three years. And as Roberto mentioned, we are excited and ready to negotiate with the district. We do have our bargaining team elected and in place now. And we do have an upcoming, I guess, our initial meeting with the district this Thursday. That being said, you know, I did, did, let me start off by just, I guess, giving a perspective of, I think, what my role is as chapter president. You know, and I sit on our executive board for the local. And I represent Alameda County chapters and members. And part of my duty as both chapter president and E-board is to make sure that I'm advocating and I'm a voice representing workers and making sure that no harm comes to them, at least doing what I can to make sure that doesn't happen. You know, we provide resources. We enable community members, families, you know, to achieve their goals and to really, you know, have a better standing, I guess, you know, in our communities, you know, as working people. And so I take some offense when I hear certain comments, especially from board members. And I was privileged to some of that yesterday during the retreat. Before I get to my concerns about those comments, you know, I'll say, my role is not just to track reclassifications, attend SCLELE hearings, you know, and represent members, be part of the bargaining team. You know, there's much more to that, you know. And some of it has to do with politics. And there's some things that I think get misrepresented sometimes. So in yesterday's retreat, you know, I heard the chancellor talking about a telecommute policy and a comp and class study, you know, or a wage study. These are things that SEIU have been pushing for quite some time, since I was initially elected in 2018. So there is some type of redirection of communication coming from administrators to the board, where I wish we would have more time than just six, you know, nine minutes to communicate with you all. But, you know, there seems to be some filtered information, you know, that doesn't quite come across for whatever reason. You know, we've been, SEIU has been insistent on having a telecommute policy and discussion for well over a year. You know, so for this to be presented as, oh, we're developing it, we're ahead of the game, you know, we're achieving what we can, and, you know, we're ahead of the game in terms of other districts in the Bay 10. Really? You know, we've been striving for better than base, than base, how do you call it, base measuring, right? So we want to achieve success above the bar. We want to be able to strive and be the best that we can do, regardless of how we judge ourselves in comparison with other districts or whatever, right? So back to the point. We've been trying to have that conversation for well more than a year. Our comp and class study, we've been insisting on that through at least three or four chancellors. So what I'm trying to relay is that we've been pushing this. It's not because administration is willingly identifying that there's a need where we're not paying, we're not being paid, you know, adequate salaries, you know, or because, you know, all of a sudden they recognize the need for hybrid staggered schedules. No, we've been pushing those requests, to have those discussions, because we know how important it is for our members. We know safety is important for our members. We know that, you know, being paid adequately is important to our members. We know that, you know, being paid adequately is important to our members, you know, to be provided benefits for themselves and for their men, their family members are important for them. These are things that we, that we strive for and we achieve. It's not something that's just dropped into our laps, laps by administrators. So I take some offense the way that some of that's communicated, and that might just be my perception. I'll take some of that. But when we have a board member comment on, on public comments and make comments, you know, and I'll just say it, you know, trustee Handy, you made comments yesterday at the retreat where you said our public comments are like a zoo. I take great offense to that. You've been here for well, you know, twenty years. You've overseen at least a couple of settlement agreements that SEIU has, has brought to the district. You've, you've been at the head of, of the board when FICMAT has come at least two times to look at what's going on with the, the, the financial issues at Peralta. You know, you've been here for twenty years. You've overseen the OPED issues. So when you make comment and we have members come out, we don't tell our members what to say. They come out because they have a story to share with you. You're not accessible. You don't answer your emails. You don't have a phone number we can call. So when they're coming to tell you their personal stories and what they're experiencing, for you to call it a zoo is disrespectful, and I think is inappropriate. You said that those comments are staged. You said that there's-
Oh, Richard, let us, let us please stay within, can we redirect and, and not have those comments?
I'll try to bring it back, yes.
Thank you, please.
You know, labor, SEIU is not an external influence. I just want to make that clear to everybody. You know, we're not an external interest. We are working-class families. We live in the communities. We work here. We were students here, you know, and future students are beginning, are going to become your employees. They see the comments. They hear what's going on, you know, and, and we, we try to keep them abreast of what's going on. All that being said, you said you're exhausted. You know, I want to take you up on that offer. I'd like you to, you know, just think in mind when elections come up, maybe the organization that you are a board member with, with the former, with former Meredith Brown trustee and a former consultant, Christine Williams, maybe you could be there, you know. But, but I think if you're exhausted, take a rest. And, you know, we have a lot to achieve, but it's very disrespectful, dis- very disingenuine when those kind of comments are, are directed toward our members. And, you know, so I'll leave it at that. You know, we do have a bargaining coming up. We don't know what to expect, especially, you know, as we have just filed an unfair labor practice against the district for what we believe is bargaining in bad faith. We, we do not what, we didn't, we don't know what to expect. The district is, is willing to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on law, on lawyers to kind of counter what we're trying to do in advocating for our members and trying to make sure people are compensated appropriately for the work that they've already performed. I could go on and on. I, you know, I could do well more than nine minutes. But with that being said, you know, respect our staff, respect SEIU, respect, respect labor. We are the students. We are the community. We provide all the services to you, administration, faculty, and students. We wear the blood of, of this district. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Richard. I have Tammy Perry next.
Hello. Hi, I'm just piggyback on what Richard said. My name is, first of all, my name is Tammy Perry, and I work at BCC in the Financial Aid Office. I'm here today to address the sudden one-hundred percent return on campus that causing stress and anxiety to many employees. There are so many cases of COVID happening mostly every day on campus lately. I have kids, and I can't take the risk to explore COVID if not necessary. We have been working under the staggered schedule since January, and we were able to deliver service to our students online and in person efficiently. Why now, all of a sudden, we need to return one-hundred percent in person? I am asking the Board of Trustees to support the SEIU's efforts to keep our students, families, and community safe by allowing us to continue with our staggering schedule, as was agreed upon with SEIU. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Margarita Tinia. I'm going to move them over. Whenever you're ready, Margarita. And you're muted.
Hi, my name is Maria Margarita Pinella. I'm working admissions and records at Laney College. And I, one of those stories that Richard was talking about. I started in Peralta as a student. I moved a student worker hourly, and now a staff. During the pandemic, I worked like crazy because I wanted to help the students enroll and go through the transition of, we have, the emergency. And now, all the amount of work that we get during the pandemic is coming back to the office, and I don't get it. I had been working in the office from the beginning. The kind of work we do required us to be in the office all the time. We always have been empowered to be in the office, but we can't have a schedule, I have a schedule because it's the only way to fulfill the requirements of the students. As big registration, we get over three hundred emails. Do you know what is working in the counter, helping a student and responding emails? A student can take five to ten minutes. I imagine it will be two or five minutes. Then, I don't get it, how you expect us to fulfill all the things we have to do, enroll the students and serve students that don't want to come to a window. The money mass we get versus the amount of students that walk into the office is not even close. In the pick, during the pick registration, when we get more students, the maximum students get forty versus three hundred emails? Why you respond three hundred emails when you have somebody in front of you? You don't want a hybrid schedule? Why? Okay, don't give a hybrid schedule. Take away all the newest stuff we have in our office. Take away the chats, take away the emails. The students don't want to come in the office. My son just graduated from high school, and he don't want to be in a college where the classes is in the classroom. Not only for the COVID, because for convenience, he want to go to work. And he told me, mommy, I don't want to spend two hours in a bus to go to a college and then have to go to work and take other two hours in the bus, when I could be one hour in the bus or less and do all my classes online at home. That is the new, new students we're getting.
Ten seconds.
Then, I really tell you, should question and ask us as a classified, what are the needs of the students? Don't assume that they need us on campus.
Thank you. Those are all the public comments, President.
Thank you. Let's move on to three point twelve, chancellor's report.
Thank you, President Reese. I'd like to start with Laney College this evening to give their report first, followed by Berkeley City College, and then College Valameda, and then last would be Merritt College. And then I just have a few comments at the end. So, President Vesikov.
Thank you, chancellor. Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Napolea Bellarys, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued students, and members of our esteemed community. I begin my report tonight by highlighting a special Laney College Career and Technical Education Department, and in addition, thanking an industry partner that has shown incredible stewardship resulting in opportunity, success, and gainful employment for our students. This spring, twenty-four Laney College machine technology students were awarded over nineteen thousand dollars in scholarships through the Peralta Foundation funded through donations by the Gene Haas Foundation. The Laney Machine Technology Haas Foundation Scholarship has been offered since 2013, and over that period, two hundred and twenty-five scholarships have been awarded for a total of more than one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. During that time, no student in machine technology who has applied has been turned down for an award. What's more, students receiving these awards who complete their studies ultimately end up working for industry partners such as the Lawrence Livermore National Lab, the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab, NASA, East Bay Municipal Utility District, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and Google, to name a few. Additionally, a small number of students have started, started their own shops, while several currently have entered the teaching field, both in secondary and post-secondary education. These achievements would not be possible without the help of the Peralta Colleges Foundation as well. Additional funding for these efforts are also, is also provided by donations from Laney College Machine Technology faculty, other customer, other cust- companies, excuse me, and past graduates of the program. I would like to extend thanks to department chair Adam Balog for his leadership, and extend additional thanks to his predecessor as chair, Louis Quinlan, who now currently provides service to our district as an active member of the Peralta Colleges Foundation. I'm also pleased to welcome Dr. Marlon Hall to the Laney community in his role as the acting vice president of Student Services. He joins us as an established educational leader with a wealth of senior-level management experience. In addition to his previous time in Student Services as vice president, his career also includes roughly nine years as a college president. He holds a doctor of education degree in educational leadership and change, as well as two master of arts degrees in education, one of them in administration and supervision, and the other in the teaching of reading and English as a second language. Dr. Hall's career in education, especially as a vice president and president, is distinguished by his attention to the student experience, and we are so grateful to have him on our team. Finally, I'd like to close my report tonight by highlighting one of our outstanding classified professionals. This week, we are sending best wishes from the Laney community to Ms. Blanca Montes de Oca, a Laney graduate who has given a full career of service to Laney College. After graduating from Laney and then serving as a, and working as a work-study employee, she was hired full-time in 1995 as a senior clerical assistant, who was part of the then-new Laney College Assessment Center. For the last twenty-six years, she continued in service as the students', student personnel services specialist within Enrollment Services, supporting so many of our students. Also, in addition to her regular duties, I will remember Ms. Montes de Oca for her constant presence at Laney College participatory governance committee meetings, especially the Budget Advisory Committee, the College Council, and then, of course, her service as a classified senator. All of us at Laney wish her the very best. This concludes my report this evening.
Good evening, President Napolea Bellarys, Chancellor Jackson, trustees and colleagues. In addition to the written report in your board packet, I wanted to share a few items. The first is, I would like to share that through a grant from the city of Berkeley, the Community Health Education Institute has selected Berkeley City College student Jerry Shaw. His art to be posted at Yali's Cafe. Jerry Shaw was a student in Michael Bobbitt's class and selected as the winner because his art points out the health hazards of sugar and the benefits of water consumption. Jerry joins a cadre of BCC students whose health, education, art are displayed throughout downtown Berkeley. And just earlier today, we were able to get a photo with the student in the community with the local business owners. So if you are in downtown Berkeley, please stop by Yali's Cafe to see his art. Would also like to invite you to join me in congratulating Vice President of Instruction Cooney Hay for being voted as the president-elect of the California Community College Chief Instructional Officers Association. Yes. She is part of a duo where they represent the first-ever Asian-Americans to lead the association in its history. I think it represents so much of the very best of our district, and I'm grateful that we have such an amazing colleague in our community. I want to share that this week, the Executive Board for the California Community Colleges Organización de Latinex for Empowerment, Guidance, and Advocacy for Success, long title, also known as Colegas, is holding their retreat at Berkeley City College this week. This group has organized over the past few years in the interest of providing support and services and development for Latinx professionals in the name of student success and completion. Yesterday evening, the BCC Science Advisory Board meeting, hosted by the science faculty and led by faculty members Barbara Derochay and Sam Gillette, had a robust discussion regarding the advancements in the field and the role that BCC can play to contribute to the industry. Among our partners and advisory members included Bayer, Kaiser Permanente, OUSD, excuse me, not OUSD, UCSF Benioff, getting my acronyms mixed up. And a special treat was having a former bio-science biotech student who went through the BCC program, who is now at Kaiser Permanente, and now through Kaiser Permanente is on our advisory board. And he really contributed or attributed his success and his opportunity and the pathway to being able to start that career at Berkeley City College. So we were very excited to have him join last night. And in closing, you'll see that then in the board packet, we have another agenda item that's related to the Community Health Worker Program. This is an area of growth and expansion for Berkeley City College to continue to be a, a support and a workforce training element for all of the healthcare community needs in the local area. With that, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues, and guests. I'm pleased to provide this report for the College of Alameda. This report highlights some of the amazing members of the College of Alameda family. First, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for approving the appointment of Dr. Diana Barami as CLA's new Vice President of Instruction. Dr. Barami has served the district and college for more than twenty years in both faculty and administrative roles. With this appointment, we now have a complete leadership team. I would also like to thank Paula Armstead for her dedicated and impactful service to the College of Alameda and to bid her a fair farewell. Paula currently serves as our Associate Dean of Educational Success and has been with College of Alameda for the past fifteen years. Paula?
Thank you. Thank you, Paula. Thank you for that. Okay, so where am I? Okay, Paula has been an exceptional equity champion and leader for College of Alameda. At her farewell celebration this afternoon, students, faculty, and staff shared their reflection of working with Paula. What I found so moving in their remarks was the tremendous love and respect they conveyed regarding her, bringing into sharp focus the great impact that she has had on our campus. We'll miss Paula and wish her all the best. Last month, we recognized three really, really terrific students for their academic success and achievement. First of all, Kalina Tran was our valedictorian. Kalina studied biology at College of Alameda. Next year, she will be transferring to the University of California Davis majoring in nutrition science. Samantha Yan was a salutatorian. Samantha graduated from the College of Alameda Science and Technology Institute in 2018, while earning an associate degree in liberal arts and then returned to College of Alameda in 2021, earning two additional degrees. She will now be pursuing a bachelor's degree in chemistry at UC Berkeley. Jennifer Stone was our president medallion recipient. Jennifer graduated CLA with an associate of arts degree in natural science and to- and two associate degrees, one in math and the other in physics. This fall, Jennifer will be transferring to UCLA, majoring in computer engineering. I applaud and celebrate the exceptional achievement of these wonderful students and wish them continued academic success. I would also like to say that one of the things that I'm very, very excited about being someone who has a STEM background, seeing these wonderful women entering the STEM field fills my heart with great joy and pride. Okay, on June eighth, the Alameda Science and Technology or ASCE Class of two thousand and twenty-two celebrated their graduation. ASCE Principal Tracy Corvalli recognized several major accomplishments, including the fact that a remarkable forty percent of ASCE seniors have already earned one or more associate degree from Peralta Community Colleges. Combined, the ASCE Class of twenty-two completed over two thousand seven hundred-plus hours of academic units with an average GPA of three point seven five. The CLA-ASCE partnership is strong, productive, and highly valued. This is a collaboration between AUST and the Peralta Community Colleges District. Dr. Diana Barami delivered an inspirational remarks on behalf of me while I was away attending my own daughter's graduation from the University of Oregon. Lastly, on May twenty-fifth, the college celebrated the many contribution of our classified professionals who serve our students, our college, and the district throughout the year. The outdoor event was well-attended, where participants enjoyed a delicious lunch, music, and gifts provided by our management team. It was my great honor to thank and to recognize the outstanding work of these dedicated colleagues. This ends my report for this evening. Thank you.
Chancellor, President Napolea Bellarys, Board of Trustees, colleagues and community, good evening. Typically, I would use my time to share the good and exciting things that we're doing up at Merit. And the board report that I submitted, for example, there is news about the pre-collegiate academy that we recently hosted. You will also take note of our new partnership with the Black Girls with Blazers Incorporated, which is an organization focused on empowering young African-American women. Normally, I would even share that this afternoon, we held a screening of a film commemorating the Stonewall Riots nineteen sixty-nine, which we know is a seminal moment in the LGBTQ plus movement. But tonight, I want to spend my time to honor and remember Professor Ron Moss. So a week and a half ago, we lost Ron to cancer, and my campus is still reeling from the news. For those who did not know him, I want to try to convey who this man was and what this man meant to us. As difficult as it is to encapsulate someone's life in just a few words, suffice it to say that Ron had a compelling story. As he freely shared with colleagues and classes, twelve years ago, Ron arrived at Merit College as a student himself and as someone who was struggling mightily with addiction. He enrolled in the Community Social Services/Substance Abuse Program, which we call COSER at Merit, and he came under the mentorship of the indomitable Dr. Bill Love. So everyone who knows Bill Love, you know when I'm talking to people nodding, you know Dr. Love. And from there, Ron took off. He earned his degree from Merit. He transferred to Cal and earned not one, but two degrees there, the MSW being the capstone. And his star continued to rise. He returned to Merit and began teaching in COSER. When Dr. Love retired, he passed the baton to Ron. And on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, this board approved his tenure. So that night, I called to actually congratulate him because he had become a tenured professor in the very program that he credited for saving his life. And I was teasing him a little bit for not being kind of as excited as I was. And that's when he shared that he, that's when he shared the news of his terminal diagnosis. And even though I knew he'd been ill, I was kind of stunned by the revelation. But over the next hour, we talked and laughed and cried a little bit and laughed some more. And because that's who Ron was, indomitable as well. So in closing, I say let us find comfort in the remembrance of this good, of the good times that we shared with him and draw inspiration from his life and legacy. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, presidents. I'd like to first of all, start by thanking the presidents publicly and their staff for providing an update on their educational master plans. We are flipping it a bit in that the educational master plans will help to inform the district's strategic plan. On the agenda tonight is an agreement that we are putting forward for consideration with West Ed that will help us in that process. As each of the individual colleges are different, so too is the district, but they will help us to grasp the document that will encapsulate what we are looking at in terms of a vision for the next five years. So thank you again, presidents. I'd also, in the military, we call it hail and farewell. And I'd like to start, I have a special place in my heart, as all of you know. I started my career as an administrator here in Peralta as the Vice President of Instruction at College of Alameda, and then went on to be president. So I want to, the hail part of it goes out to Dr. Diana Basrami. I think she is an example of the quality of faculty and staff that we have within the district, that she could start as a faculty member, be a department chair, worked on an interim basis, and now is the permanent Vice President of Instruction. My farewell also goes out to an individual at College of Alameda, Paula Armstead, who I've known since she came to this district sixteen years ago. Bubbly, full of passion, students love her, and she will be sorely missed, and I wish her well on the next chapter of her life. And then last, in keeping with what President Johnson said, I also want to ask the board if they would close and adjourn this session in honor of Ron Moss. Our condolences go out to his family. He was a great person. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the president.
Dr. Johnson, at the end, I'm going to hand it back to you so we can close the meeting in Professor Moss's honor at the very end. Okay. And then, and then I, you know, I'll kind of carry on what the chancellor had just said in terms of the first part of her congratulations. If I had a glass of wine, I think I would cheer the many congratulations there are. So in terms of Laney, congratulations to the Machine Technology Scholarships. Congratulations to Louis Quinlan, who's playing an active role in the foundation. I'm glad that after retirement, he decided to do more work. And then also to Lorena Baldoso for receiving the Golden Medallion over at BCC, the artist-student Jerry Shaw. I will most definitively go see that work, so congratulations to him. And of course, to Kuni Hay. That's awesome. That's really, really fantastic. And then also to the student panelists, you didn't say his name, but what an admirable thing to see his life go that, in that particular direction, start of, what's his name? Willard Chang. So congratulations to Willard Chang, for sure. And then over at COA, as you had said, congratulations to Dr. Basrami. That is just fantastic in terms of her trajectory. And as I already told you, very impressed by her, so I'm so glad that she did get that position. Congratulations to Paula on her retirement and to the three students, Kalina, Samantha, and Jennifer. And then, of course, Dr. Johnson. I did not know Professor Ross, but I, just hearing a little bit about him, his life story is truly an inspiration to all of us and will live palpably to many students and many people's lives and hearts. So thank you for closing later on in his honor. All right, let us move on to number four, four point one, public hearing in action. So gabbling in, this being the time and date notice, the Board of Trustees will now convene a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the SEIU's initial sunshine proposal to open all articles of the collective bargaining agreement. Sasha, do we have any public comments at all?
Checking now. Anybody who has a public comment, please raise your hand. No comments.
Okay. Hearing none, I will, the public comment section of this hearing is now closed, gavel out. And let's move on to four point two. Four point two is a public hearing in action. This being the time and date notice, the Board of Trustees will now convene a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the district's supplemental initial proposal to PFT to include Article eighteen and Article twenty of the collective bargaining agreement. Sasha, do we have any public comments on this item?
For anyone who has public comments, please raise your hand. No public comments.
Okay. Since there are no more comments or no comments, I will declare the public hearing closed, gavel out. And may I have a motion to adopt the district's initial proposal?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, UN second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee withrow. Discussion. All right, let's move on to the vote, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, UN?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, may I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Subvote. Oh, second.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
That was me.
Oh, okay. Trustee Gonzalez, UN, second. Trustee Jenkins. Discussion, right? Let's do roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Student trustee withrow, I mean trustee withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, UN?
I'll be a student trustee tonight, too. Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope? Yes. Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then we're off to ten point one, consider readoption of resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-one for District Brown Act-covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per California Government Code, Section five four nine five three. Dr. Jackson, did you want to say anything, or are we just going to move forward with that?
And sorry, I have no comments. This is just reaffirmation of what we've talked about in the past, and the board has approved it in the past.
Good. May I have a motion? Trustee withrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, UN?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarys?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is seven twenty-six, and we're on to reports. Trustee reports, let's go on to student trustee Hogan. Do you have a report for us tonight?
No.
Thank you, student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino?
Nothing to report.
Trustee Jenkins?
Real brief. Trustee Handy and I attended a Juneteenth event hosted by a councilperson, Linda Hand Foundation and CBA Consulting. It was good to see everyone there, out in the community, and it was good to network with, good to network with the community and promote Peralta and the community. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez, UN?
Thank you. I'll just briefly recount that at our retreat yesterday, we spent a fair amount of time talking about master planning, educational master planning. And I'm really thankful for the people stepping forward to do that work. And I just wrapped up my own grading as an instructor this morning, actually. We were on quarters, and so I went late. And the thing that I consistently note as an educator these days and as a board member these days is how challenging it is for students to find time to invest in their own learning. The number of hours that students are able to put in because of the numerous other obligations falls seemingly every year. And with the shift to online learning, that seems to have exacerbated the problem. I'm hoping that as we do our educational master planning and we try to understand that phenomenon, that we're conscious of trying to figure out, one, how much time, in fact, are students investing? And how do we, as a district, enable them, empower them, to put more investment into their own learning? So I look forward to moving forward master planning process and seeing what our colleagues in this district are able to figure out about where we are and where we want to go. So that was it. It was a useful retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee withrow? Okay, trustee Handy?
Pass.
Okay. Vice President Delphine Pope?
Yeah, I'll be brief. We had, so we, meeting trustee Jenkins and I, had our monthly office hours last week, and we had the pleasure of having our student trustee Lisa Hogan join us. Thank you very much, student trustee, for coming and giving us your thoughts on what's going on, and we look forward to working with you very closely in the next year. And as a reminder to everybody, we have open office hours. It's every fourth Wednesday from six to seven thirty. They will be in Oakland. We usually announce it on our Twitter handles. And so once we get a consistent place to meet, we will go ahead and do so. Thank you.
And I do not have any reports, so I don't have a report myself. So why don't we go to announcements, and after announcements, I'll give it back to Dr. Johnson.
Great. Let me pull these up. Thank you, Sasha. So first announcement, enrollment is open for summer and fall two thousand and twenty-two classes. Summer four-week sessions start on July fifth. Visit peralta.edu for more information. Laney College Machine Technology Program is hosting an in-person meet-and-greet for women in precision metal cutting careers on Thursday, June thirtieth, from six PM to seven thirty PM. The event is free. Come meet women who are thriving in this well-paying industry. You can also visit the Peralta website, events across the district section of the homepage for more information. The Peralta Community College District, including the four colleges, will be closed on Monday, July fourth, and observance of Independence Day. And last, the next meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Tuesday, July twelfth. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Napolea Bellarys. It's my honor to close this meeting in the memory of Professor Moss, Ron, advocate, educator, colleague, and friend. So rest easy, my brother.
Thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, all. Be well.